Um. Okay, good, there she is. So, um. I would. Like to make a motion to waive the legal, the, the reading of the legal notice. If everyone is familiar with how we announced it to the public that there was this hearing. So that I would make that motion.
Well, seconded.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Um. Is the appealing party present? It. Well, whoever's, um, I think it would be William Hathaway. Okay. Yes, come on up. Um, and.
I'm joining.
Hi. You can say your name for the record.
My name's Amy Hathaway.
Okay.
I am Phil's husband.
Okay. Um, do you have any additional comments from the application that we received?
Yes, we have some additional paperwork that we would like to provide with elevations in the drawings.
Okay. And I also know that when MJ and I went out to look at the site, William was going to show us some. Um. Sketches of what the, the final building would look like.
Yeah.
Great, okay, so we can get a sense of, of how it's going to look.
Okay.
Um, beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay. If you can email it. No.
Do you have any narrative that you want to go along with this?
Yeah, would you like to move forward? What's attached?
Sure.
I'm not ignoring people, I'm just working on emailing the different party to Gina, so we can get it to, um, people online.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Is this different than the left?
Uh, no, I believe that's, it's the same version. Yeah, it has at least all the same detail, the relevant detail.
Okay.
Yes. Um, the larger format is the, the architect's drawings. Or a section, selection of the architect's drawings.
Uh huh.
Um. To show you the.
Can you see if your microphones are? It should be a green light.
Yes. Yep.
Great.
Yeah. Everything. Um. So it's a section, we have the north, south, east, west views of the. Um. Proposed structure.
Uh huh.
So this, this is the, um, top down, so the darker section is our existing house. Um, and also highlighted in the blue are the setbacks to the highway boundary, so. To the front porch, uh, we're currently at seven. Feet, seven inches, seven and a half inches. And then the proposed addition. To the west side would be twenty-four feet, so it's. Uh, set forward a little bit from the, the main structure, but. Well behind the, the. Front of the porch. As also worth noting, our, our lot sits up higher than the road, which I'm sure you noticed.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's not. As kind of imposing as it, as it seems, so we're probably six or seven feet above the roadway for that. Short period, so.
MJ slipped up the hill, should just.
I said.
It's, it's quite stupid, yes, I don't know that she said.
Yeah. I did slip, Mark. You didn't fall off a slipper, you started.
Um, so the, the. Proposed addition would be primarily to the west side, so the, the two-story addition, um, which you see in the light gray. Also, the, what would be the northeast corner, um, top right. Uh. Is currently a little cut out in our house, we basically square off the house, uh, in a single story. And then, as you can see from the elevations, the existing two-story roof gets raised up a little bit. Just to give us a little more room upstairs. And then. I think the only other relevant thing, at least at this point, would be to point out the well, which is right in the front. Um, where, where you see the seventeen foot, seven inch, seven and a half inches is our, our existing well. Um, so. Obviously, we have to, for subject reasons, be. I think, I can't remember, it was fifty feet or a hundred feet. Uh, away from, from that, which kind of prevented us from considering. Uh, an option directly off the back of that.
Okay. And you're gonna take out a bunch of trees on that west side, is that right?
Um, there are two in the way currently.
Okay, are those the large spruces?
Uh, one is, um, I think like a Scotch pine.
Okay.
And then there's a few tamaracks, large.
Okay.
Uh, so at least one of those will have to come down. Um.
And as I recall, there's not, from that. There's no visual line to a neighbor from that side, is that right?
On my side, there is no visual.
Okay. Okay. Um. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a comment. I'd like to congratulate you on submitting a complete and detailed application, makes it very easy for us to review. And come to a conclusion.
Gina was very helpful, and thank you, Gina.
Yes.
Good, thank you, thank you. Um, are there anyone here who wants to comment? Anyone presently audience?
Our fair neighbor.
Uh huh, okay.
Um, and. Hasn't had a similar variance or anything. But. Back to the thing. I feel better. But, um. We're here to push down. We take over, we like her.
Are you also the architect?
Their son is the architect.
Oh, their son is, yeah, I heard he was nearby.
He, and he grew up.
Okay, okay.
Knows that.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, good, um. Are there any response or something else that we don't have in our packet that I need to know about? Okay. Thank you. Um. I will now move to close the public hearing. Um, do I have a second? So I could come. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, so how this works is now we deliberate, we go through these five questions and we make our decision. You are welcome to stay and hear us, blah, 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 and hear our decision, but if you want or need to leave, you can also call Gina. Um, I would imagine, in the morning, and she can tell you.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Do you want to? Talk about this first or go right into the questions? Go right into the finding review?
Um, I have no concerns.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, let's, let's go, let's go right to the questions. Okay. Um. It's been a while. Um, eh, one, in considering whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. Um. I would say, no, uh. It. The. Building itself is very in keeping with. The neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, um, the addition is really in keeping with the style of the house. Uh, the neighbors next door are here and have not objected. And there are actually very few other neighborhoods.
Actually, in fact, they supported it.
Yes, yeah, they supported the application, and there's not a neighbor to the west, um. Correct, yeah, so I would move that, no, no undesirable character, and it, it, it actually may boost it by creating a. Um, updated and. Attractive, larger home in the neighborhood.
Yes, I, I think it'll improve the neighborhood.
Okay. So that's, uh, my convoluted motion, someone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. Uh, two, in considering whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Feasible for the applicant to pursue. Other than the area variance, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows.
I think no.
Okay.
Given the restraints of the property, well, septic and general placement of existing home, which does not appear. To be a feasible or practical alternative other than the requested variance.
Okay.
I would make that as a motion, if I can get a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Uh, three, in considering whether the requested area variance is substantial, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. I'm just gonna do the, the percentage thing that we often do. Um. Yes, it's substantial.
I, I would argue no.
Okay, let's hear it.
Do I hear my argument?
Yeah, of course.
I would argue no, as the further encroachment of the front of, of the front yard setback is only four point five feet. As compared to the existing home. So I do not believe it is substantial and would be consistent with the other. With the rest of the existing single-family home.
I think that's fine, we can als, I could also say, yes, it's substantial, but, oh, that's true, but I'm gonna go with you. And William gave me that, so you can tell me it was four point five feet, is that?
Yep.
Okay. So I like that motion, then I would second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, three, in considering whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact. On the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. Again, I would say no, they are going to remove. Two trees, I think they said, or three. But again, they're not removing trees that are in anybody's sightline, they're actually. A little close to the house for safety, as MJ pointed out, so I don't think that, if anything, it may be a s. An improvement in the safety of, of the home. Um. By repositioning the well and septic, they're also. Um, probably protecting the environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Anybody got anything else?
And also, the, the setback is, I mean, there were other houses along.
Oh, they grow, yes.
That were probably closer to the road than this is going to be.
Why don't you just say that it's consistent with the neighborhood conditions, you know, of ex- existing, existing neighborhood setbacks?
Okay.
You might want to add that somewhere.
Yep, we will. So you want to reiterate that, MJ, or make a motion? Oh, give it a crack, no. Um. Okay. So I think it's no, given that. They're just gonna remove a tree or two that will probably. Should have been removed for safety reasons anywhere, and they've obviously paid. Good attention to well and septic health department requi- qualifications, so no, the answer is no. Um, that's a motion, anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
All favors, that'd be faster entry.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah, yeah, very fast, indeed.
Okay, awesome, so. Uh, finally, considering whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, zoning board of appeals finds as follows.
Just, just for the record, I just wanted, uh, recast that vote, because I don't think we actually.
Did all in favor?
Did, did an all in favor, yes.
Okay, good, so let's. Um. I made the motion, MJ seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um. Andrew, you want to? Talk about number five, whether the difficulty was self-created, to which we always answer yes, but then add a but in some cases.
Yes, I mean, the, I mean, the.
Bless you.
I believe the applicants themselves, themselves, uh, say that the, uh. Um, the, the difficulty was self-created, so. Um, you know, I, I don't have any, I don't have anything, uh, any way to, uh, oppose that or to say something different. Um. Uh. So the, the answer is yes. Um. Of course, it's, um. Given the other factors, I don't cer, it's, you know, certainly not.
Right. So, yeah, we always answer yes, because they, you could always not do it, right? Um.
I have some.
Yeah, good, I would love to.
Yes, however, given there does not appear to be a feasible means to conformance, and that there are no negative impacts likely to result. From the variance, it would seem reasonable to approve the request.
Alright. Andrew, you want to second that?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um. Okay. So let's, um. Determine the secret, is it, uh, type two, Henry, and?
Yep.
Okay.
Six seventeen, five C, point sixteen, I think this is the best, uh, sixteen and seventeen.
Okay, great. Um.
I should say NYCRR, six seventeen, five C, six point sixteen.
And we normally make a motion on that to accept that secret determination, is that right? Um.
Yes.
Yes, so, um. Henry makes the motion, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Here was no. County two thirty-nine, right? I don't. Remember seeing one.
I don't, no, I don't think for that sake, didn't leave one?
Under the. Um, August. What year was it?
Right.
Yeah, there's, well, there was a, there was an agreement between the town and the county in August of two thousand twelve, is it?
Mine.
I can't remember what it is.
That's just one.
That, I mean, that's where, that's where, seven, two thirty-nine.
But also, secret does. We can't see, but he's here, okay. Um, it's my.
You know, Mike, okay, Gina, maybe you take that off the screen, and Mike, I apologize, I forgot you're in the room.
No worries, I've, I've been following along, Janice.
I wasn't able to see. Um. And just before we call for a motion, was there anything you wanted to add, Mike?
No, I've been, I've been, uh. I'm sure Joy, Joy's been seeing me, I've been.
So.
Agreeing all along.
Our fifth board member, who I forgot about. Uh, sorry, Mike.
No worries.
Okay, so I would like to call for a motion to grant or deny the variance. And ask if there's any conditions.
I saw a move.
Okay, to grant?
To grant.
Is submitted.
Yes, submitted, no conditions.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Mike. Okay, you guys are good to go. Good, thanks.
Have you seen it?
Thank you.
I will be really on time and on budget. Good luck.
Okay. So Mike, this, um, time, I'm gonna really try to pay attention, if you want to say something, please. Yeah, because what we, what we can't see right now, because some of the application materials are on the screen.
Alright, no worries.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Um, so I would like to. Open the hearing for nine thirty-three Dryden Road, I'd also like a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I take it you're Mr. Schneider?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, so that was. Okay, good, uh, that was my next question, if you were present. Um. Comments or questions from the board? I know I have some questions. Um. So since I've. Got the podium right now, I'm gonna go for it. Um. My first question is. Am I right that you're gonna add six new trees in Lot B and two shrubs, is that about right?
Yeah, that's about right, um, there's probably a little bit more shrubs that we're showing on our drawing, and.
Okay, okay. And then in Lot A, three new trees?
Uh, yes, and some shrubs along the side of the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any tree removal anywhere?
We do have some clearing and rubbing. Uh, the side where the, the house is on the Lot B side, that's kind of where we're. Cleaning that up a little bit.
Okay, and that's in Lot B.
That's in Lot B, um. No significant trees that we're remo- removing anywhere on the site.
Okay, and that big land of spruce, I believe it's on the east side, is actually not on your properties, there's a driveway that goes.
That's on the other side, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Um. So, that's, um, my other, I have two, two more que. You had mentioned you were looking at changing the bus stop and having a crosswalk added, do you have any update on whether you're gonna get a crosswalk?
Um, we haven't had any further conversations about that, the plan at the current. I mean, the current plan is to leave the bus stop in its present location.
Okay.
And I, we're, we're rolling work with DOT and, uh, the town to get a crosswalk, which would, I think, make sense from that location.
Mm-hmm.
To the sidewalk that marches along that side of the road. Um, you know, we're, we're happy to pursue those, continue to pursue those conversations, but, you know, it's gonna take. Talking to DOT and, you know, getting something in, in place.
Okay, so there's not, really, you don't know?
We don't really know, we just been pursued for well over a year now.
Uh.
Uh, they, they will eventually wear down, I think. Andy is very persistent on this, and.
Isn't that a condition of their site plan approval, and in any event?
That they work out. Continue to work with DOT, but we can't make the state or anything.
Right. Uh, I said to work the.
Yeah.
Things out.
Yeah, I just wondered if they had gotten anywhere, because that would increase, there's a sort of public safety question, and that certainly, the continuing to work with it is.
Yeah, and it's, it's not only, yeah, public safety and workers' safety, that they're constantly going across the street to the lot, across the.
Seeing the lot.
Yep. Yep.
Um. Other questions, um, that, that people would like to ask?
Well, I was curious on the, um. As you're facing the building. Um, on the left-hand side, it looked like there was a wellhead or something.
No, I think you're looking at a old sign foundation. That was there.
Hey.
Yep, that's still there, we're gonna remove it. Um. And there is, uh, municipal water that comes along that side of the building, and also gas service that comes along the side of the building, but there is. No railheads out there.
So, uh, gases, all that's gonna be moved, then?
Uh, yes, that will have to be relocated. Yep.
I, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's okay.
Yep.
I failed to ask you if there was something you wanted to add before we started grilling you.
No, I, I think at this point, we've been before the planning board a number of times, and. Um. Yeah. I can't think of anything.
Okay.
I see that there's. A septic, uh, to be relocated, they're still utilizing, there's no public sewer there?
There's public sewers.
That's what I found, but I, I see there was a note on here to relocate. Never mind, I'm looking at the log back.
No, yeah.
I'm sorry.
You had me scared there for a minute.
How did I miss that?
I should have missed tea to boot.
Um. That's from the, they got mixed up, you know. The pallet was assembled, but we're not assembling in the right order. Yeah, because actually, both MJ and I noticed, and I unstapled mine and reorganized them, because, yes, some of the. Application that was here for the first hearing got met, stapled in with the second one, they were not ordered correctly, but. Um. Andrew, you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mike, you have anything you'd like to ask the applicant?
Uh, I was just gonna ask about the bus stop, but that's already been asked, so.
Hold on, I can't hear you, we're gonna, we can't hear you, so one second.
Oh, I was just, eh, I was just saying, I, I had a question about the bus stop, but that's been asked, so I'm good.
You can do that?
Yep, he was asking about the bus stop.
Okay, okay. Okay, that. Just give Emmy a second to see if he has any questions.
Well, I'm glad.
Questions, Henry, you need a minute, because that's fine, take a minute if you got it.
Um.
Okay. Um.
I think this thing has probably been beaten, gone to death about fourteen times already.
Does look like it.
I have been reviewed, it's.
So, there's no one else present, is there, do we have the, the owners in Zoom room, are there any other? It's, so there's no present to ask comments, or is, have we gotten anything from? Nothing, okay.
No.
Um. And we did get. Let's see, we got the county. Review. I believe, is here somewhere.
Their comments were rolled into the site plan approval.
Yes.
Fault, but.
Yeah, yeah, I do hope for something good, I'm not quite finding it, but I'm sure I.
I don't know where it is.
I know I saw it.
I've seen it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, they did have a, I mean, they had no objections, but they had some.
Recommendation.
Right.
About the crosswalk.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I. Maybe I saw.
Issues with DOT.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it was the same as what was integrated into this, though. Thank you. Oh, okay. Now it would mean I could read that. Yeah. So what's that last two paragraphs said, what? Ina.
Uh, whoever, however, have the following comments on post-action, so first of all, new determined proposed action have no significance. It's not very right. Most of the, uh, we have the following comments on post-action. As part of our newly conducted initial consultation that we are stating part of the communication. On post-sentence, on statement, we've been sixty-six. Nice staff express some concerns that the fine bus space. On the shoulder as well as definition of access and. Nice guy has noted that we will conduct a full review of these items once the permanent application has completed. We suggest that the town prefer the applicant to work closely with nice, uh, ensure that the post. Proposal provides safe points of ingress and egress, and that there is probably expensive bus service. You had to be number two, you have a lot of them.
Uh, no, that's fine, that was, that's what I recalled, and just, I, I think we all, I had seen this, I must have seen it online, and just a second one, you don't have to read it, what was that one about, was that?
Uh. You can't. Uh, about the bus stop location, area accessibility, yeah, funding of relocation to the bus stop. Okay.
So again, that's ongoing, and will be part of how this goes forward, okay, great. Um. Uh, if nobody has any other questions or comments, I would move to close the public hearing.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So again, we're gonna now do what we just did and come up to our decision. Um. Do you want to go right into the questions, or do you wanna talk about it in general first? I mentioned that same generals, what we talked about before we opened the hearing, is that we're gonna, um, discuss. The request for both variances. Together as we go through these five questions, since they are so intertwined and interconnected, um. Okay. Any? Should we just do our final review? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So, one, in considering whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment. To nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. I, I, I would. Argue that, um. It. Could. I mean, first of all, there's already an auto repair shop there.
Yes.
It'd be a very different situation if there wasn't one, and you were entering one into a neighborhood. So, in that sense, it's, um. Not introducing. Any huge change, it's also not gonna change its hours of operation, it's gonna be mindful of the lighting, so it's not changing any of those things that could. Change the character of a neighborhood. And by include, improving some of the. Especially Lot B, it may in fact be an improvement.
Right. And, and also. While we were there, one of the neighbors came over.
Yep.
And we asked him, you know, if there had been any discussions amongst the neighbors, and. He, this gentleman we spoke to said that. he, this gentleman we spoke to said that people in the neighborhood weren't favor of it.
Yeah.
So.
Any other comments?
Kinda hearsay, isn't it?
Right, we don't have to include that, but that's just part of, yeah.
It was his point.
This is part of you and could have been your said, but.
He says, wow, and I don't, uh.
But, um, uh, Henry, do you have anything you're gonna add to that in terms of detriment? I mean, my, my idea is.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Might wanna include that, um, that it's, has been sub- sub- subject to, uh, site plan approval and by the planning board, special use permit by the town board, and has received those approvals. So.
Yes, we would probably be mentioning that a lot, yeah.
Yeah, add those to what you already said.
Sure.
Which, which should address, you know, conformity to the, to the existing neighborhood or consistency with the existing neighborhood.
Have you received any, um, comments via email, uh, from the public regarding this? No?
Well, it's also addresses a conformity to the just general aims of the town and the purpose, you know, of what would, that's been, it's been, have gone through that process. Okay, so I think the motion then is, um, no, it would not cause an undesirable change because, A, there's already been, the business has existed there, that the hours and the noise and the lighting will not change, um, that it has also been subject to reviews from both planning board and site plan review of the town board. So, um, so I will put that together and that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, two, in considering whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other's own method, feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. Somebody wanna speak to that?
I can.
Please do.
It would appear that there are no other feasible means to pursue as the surrounding properties are fully developed and the existing nine thirty-three, uh, Dryden Road property is limited in area point seven, plus or minus point seven four acres. Therefore, it would seem to be the only feasible means to per- to pursue this project, to proceed with this project, not pursuing. That's my answer.
That's cool. Hey, Mike, you want a second that?
Sure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Henry. Um, three, in considering whether the requested area variance is substantial, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. I'm, I think we should speak to the green space a little somewhere in one of these.
They, they do.
Good.
Well, I can offer something.
Sure.
This would be substantial as the V H M U D, which is the Verna Hamlet, um.
Mixed use.
District requires one acre for any allowed use. Current lot provides plus or minus point seven four acres. V H M U D also requires there to be forty percent of each lot to be developed or dedicated to green space. The proposed, the proposed expansion reduces green space with single lot A to twenty-two point five percent. However, applicant owns a lot directly across the street of plus or minus point four seven acres that has and would continue to be used for the combined, uh, to combine lots A and B equaling one point plus or minus one point two one acres. Owners have committed by site plan approval, special use permit approval to mitigate shortcomings of green space and lot size by utilizing both lots A and B uh, in this project pursuit.
Okay, I would add only one thing is that I think although there's an overall reduction in quality, it's clear from the plans that there's an increase in quality. They're gonna put in some native trees in the middle where it's just empty space now. They're gonna clean up shrubs and I think that Lot B will be significantly beautified, quite honestly. Um, so I would just add that to what we saw.
Perfect.
Um.
The, the, the people are used to the.
I know, but they're gonna, they're gonna appreciate you putting in red bats. I mean, it could be quite pretty, right, when you look at it, so I think that the idea quality versus quality bears mentioning, so. Um, okay, so I second that, Henry, with my addition and all in favor?
I.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Mike knows.
Yeah, Mike was there, he waved.
Aye, 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 I'm here.
Um. Four, in considering that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, the zoning board of appeal finds as follows, um. I think I would hearken him and maybe back to the, you can talk to this too, to the facts of the town and there's stormwater and that kind of stuff that's gone before. The justice. You got something else up your sleeve?
Um, no, actually, I just spelled all that out, but.
Okay, read it, and then that could be a motion, why not?
Actually, it, it appears I admitted the stormwater, but. Alright, there should be no adverse impact as the use is conforming and is an expansion of said conforming use. Additionally, applicants have applied for and received both special use permit authority and site plan review approval to proceed with this project. Both reviews determine sufficient mitigation had been provided to overcome the zoning variance request and recommend that the Z B A grant the requested relief.
Right. Good. Andrew, you wanna second that motion?
I do, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I heard Mike. Um, five, in considering whether alleged difficulty was self-created, the zoning board of appeals finds as follows. Give it a try and get.
Yes.
Yes, of course, yes. You wanna give it a try and get?
Um.
You can kind of re- repeat what Henry said for the other one, which is a constricted lot, doesn't like, go, go on, give it a, give it a sec.
It was, it was, yes, it was self-created because you don't have to do this. But I don't know, I need help with that.
I mean, the lots, there's, you know, so, yeah, you could move, which how would that benefit the neighborhood to have an empty auto service place right there? Um, but in terms of expanding, um, you know, you, they seem to be doing it with the minimum of destruction possible. You got it, you got second, Henry, I can see.
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I've taken up too much space.
Not at all, I know, and you've got the, the, so.
I don't see another way that it could be done.
Right.
Other than moving.
Yeah, I remember, which is much, I don't see how that benefits the community, quite honestly, so.
Right.
Um.
Well, I'll give you what I have.
Good, yeah, I'm starting here. Let me, let me feel you shouldn't be sharing that.
Yes, the proposal itself, uh, the, this proposal and need for two variances are self-created. That given the project includes sufficient mitigation to overcome the requested two variants, the mitigation measures were submitted with a site plan, which was approved by the Dryden Town Planning Board and a special use permit and approval by the Dryden Town Board, with recommendations that the zoning board approve the requested variances.
Okay, that's great. So, um, I can put those words in MJ's mouth and we can.
Your motion she made it.
Right, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good, okay, so now this is, um.
This could.
Unlisted, this is unlisted, okay, yeah.
Really.
Right, we're not the lead agency.
That's correct.
So we need to.
It's not exempt. But we are only an involved agency and the lead agency was established by the Dryden Town Planning Board on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And at which time they declared a negative declaration for the project in general.
So do we want to just reaffirm that we accept the neg deck?
You already did.
We did, okay.
I just need to put on the record that the neg deck has already been issued by.
Okay.
And I just referred to that as well.
Correct.
So it's in our minutes that we recognize that now.
Okay, good, okay, great, Henry, good. Um.
And the same thing applies to the general municipal review, which was directed to the general plan and I don't believe directed to us and by any means and was contained conditions, recommendations, I'm sorry, not conditions, recommendations that the applicants pursue as necessary.
Meaning the sidewalk and the bus and all that stuff, yeah, okay. Um. Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to grant or deny the variance.
I'll second it.
Well, you wanna grant or deny? Oh, you gotta make a motion either grant or, or deny.
I make a motion that we grant it.
Hey.
Uh, there ought to be some condition, there ought to be a condition.
Okay.
MJ would move to approve condition on conformance with the prior approved site plan and special use permit approvals, as well as conforming with all provisions of all other involved and interested agencies.
Is that okay? You guys got anything to comment?
Whatever be involved.
What?
That covers keeping it under the same ownership. So it was a condition of, yes.
Yeah, they aimed that under, yes, all those, all those things at the, we know that were mentioned by the, the planning board as well as all that, okay.
All I've been doing is for forty-one.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, well, I'll, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey. Good, good to go, yeah, thank you. Um.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we have.
Advocate circuit.
Thank you, you're welcome, yeah, I think I've been, thank you. Um, thank you, over there, you, you approved, okay.
Thank you very much for all your help.
Yeah, thank you, um, so.
Jake, Henry, glad to see you again and good luck with your project.
Yeah.
You, Henry, your knowledge is really super helpful for the zoning. Yes, thank you very much, Henry.
Good luck.
Okay, bye, so I'll leave the meeting, thank you.
So we have two more things, Henry, we have a application for an area variance on Sider Hill Road, um, which we just need to vote to say that we allow the planning board to be the lead agency in this. So I move that we accept the planning board's lead agency on this application for Sider Hill Road.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are there minutes? I was not at the last meeting, so.
Um, we need to approve the minutes.
Right, and I had, I wasn't, the way I hadn't seen them, I probably shouldn't vote on them.
Well, you couldn't vote on anybody.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm saying, so has anyone seen them?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay, so you guys could vote on them.
Quite well, actually, I saw.
Okay.
I'm not a stickler on minutes like Ben.
Ben was, yeah, okay, I'm, let us, let's see.
Would somebody like to move to approve the minutes of the April second, was it meeting or first? I can't remember. Was it April first or second? I can't remember.
Yeah, it was, it was April first.
I made a joke about that.
I moved the, set the minutes from, uh, the first one, the zone, the.
Okay, great, somebody second?
I don't remember seeing.
Did you?
Second.
Okay, so would you run abstain from this vote, MJ? Okay, so we had three in favor and then abstent, or two abstentions because I wasn't here. MJ, cause she doesn't remember seeing them, but we still have, that's an approval still.
Yeah.
Three of two.
It's still in the second.
Three to zero.
Okay.
Yes.
What are thinking of? What kind of, I, so. Like, can we see?
Maybe you weren't, the last one, you were here.
Yeah, you were.
No, you, you told me that you have to bother.
That's right.
The last.
That's, okay, okay, so I would move to adjourn this hearing. But in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mike, when are you coming back?